The prayer today is, Heavenly Father, there's no storm that God won't carry you through, no bridge that God won't help you cross, no battle that God won't help you win. Trust God and never give up. Amen. Public comment. Anyone wishes to make a comment or ask a question on the items appearing on the meeting agenda, please sign in and wait to be called upon. Begin by stating your full name and address, and we'll have up to three minutes to comment or ask a question. We kindly ask that you refrain from disorderly or disruptive conduct. Has anybody signed in?
No. Bill says empty this morning.
Okay. So item number two, Amy?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. On October 9th, I accepted the retirement for the Department on Aging, pardon me, Retirement Resignation of Natalie Pejak, Social Services Worker to be Effective October 3rd, 2025. Also on October 9th, I approved and executed for Community and Economic Development the Ohio Department of Development Certification of Determination of Subsequent Exemption for a Categorical Exclusion Project in regard to the Library Administration Building Purchase, Chardon Senior Center using revolving loan funds. And that's all.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adrian Gordon with the Commissioners' Office. So today's financials include an appropriations transfer to the Prosecutor's Contract Services Account for reimbursement checks that were received from the USDA that were deposited into the general fund. There's also an appropriations transfer from the Auditor's Office in their Real Estate Assessment Fund payroll accounts to true-up balances to year-end. There's a cash transfer from the general fund to Court Technology for a portion of their 2025 funding. There's a transfer from the Commissioners' Office to the Unemployment Rotary Fund, and one from the Board of DD from the Operating Fund to the Residential Services Fund for Medicaid waiver and locally funded services. Among the encumbrances are several travels, one from the Auditor's Office to attend the 2025 County Commissioners and Engineers Association of Ohio Winter Conference in Columbus, Ohio, from the Common Police Court to attend the 2025 Judges Winter Conference in Dublin, Ohio, and from the Treasurer's Office to attend the County Treasurer's Association of Ohio Fall Conference in Columbus, Ohio. Among the vouchers are $43,442.25 from Community Development to 7145 Pine LLC for a Brownfield Remediation Grant Project, from the Engineers Office to Roniak Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Sperry Road, which is $656,633.75, and Fairmount Road, which is $203,610.50, and also crack sealing on various county roads, which was in the amount of $106,325. There's also a $52,052.85 from Maintenance to North Bay Construction Incorporated for Pay Request Number Two on the installation of a new generator at the Emergency Management Agency. And finally, there's a revenue certification from the Commissioners' Office in our Building Improvement Fund for additional unbudgeted revenue received in 2025.
Commissioners Fiddler.
Aye.
Commissioner Breckin.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVore.
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Commissioners' Office is requesting the Board approve an increase in the amount of $10,000 for the engagement agreement with Benesh Friedlander Copeland and Arnoff LLP for legal counsel in connection with the provision of legal services to support the design, construction, and delivery of the proposed capital improvement project Phase One in a new not-to-exceed amount of $160,000 without prior approval from the Board. And this Phase One engagement agreement was to support the Prosecutor's Office legally to build this building and do all the construction documents and all the legal wranglings that surrounded that. And this is wrapping up. So we got a bill recently where there was not a sufficient amount within the current $150,000 that had been prior approved to pay. So, and this goes back many years, you know, since before this building was, had begun construction.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was gonna add. My understanding is that, because I almost had a heart attack when I thought we were spending like $300,000 on a law firm that I didn't even know that Commissioners retained. But it seems like this is back five-plus years.
Oh, yes.
And we're not really racking up significant new legal costs in this regard.
No. And the current bills, I think, amount to a few thousand dollars between the two of these. So.
You want to go to five as well?
Sure. The Commissioners' Office is requesting the Board approve an increase in the amount of $50,000 for the engagement agreement with Benesh Friedlander Copeland and Arnoff LLP for legal counsel in connection with the provision of legal services to support the design, construction, and delivery of the proposed capital improvement project Phase Two in a new not-to-exceed amount of $150,000 without prior approval from the Board.
I move to approve items number four.
Second.
Commissioners Fiddler.
Aye.
Commissioner Breckin.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVore.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Morning, Rick.
Good morning. Rick Blamer Airport. Taxway project, as you know, is just in its final wrap-up phases, just cleaning up everything. And we're asking for approval of Request Number Five for the Taxway Extension Construction Project, specifically to construct parallel taxiway Alpha, including taxiway connector Alpha 1 and Alpha 2, construction final phase, and install taxiway edge lights for grant 3-39-0054-028-2024. Total amount of $676,752.20. FAA share is $609,076.98. ODOT share is $33,837.21. And the local amount would be $33,837.21.
And Rick, you reviewed the invoices. You believe them to be correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, last time you came before us, I had some questions about change orders and whether there's a legal or a contractual obligation for the Board of Commissioners to pay those. And you indicate that you would get clarification on that.
And I sent that to Amy?
Well, I mean, you sent, you sent an email. Let's see, I have it here somewhere. You said, "As to the previous questions from the last meeting and the email you sent prior, I believe the material I sent plus my comments during the meeting answered those questions, and I have nothing further to add."
I really couldn't add anything more.
Okay, but during the meeting, you, like, I asked a question about the contractual relationship. I said, I mean, I have the transcript. So I said, "The answer is that there's not a contractual relationship that requires Commissioners to put in an increased share regarding the change order." And I said, "Is that correct?" You replied, "I was under the impression there was." I said, "Where can I find that information?" You said, "Provided resources," you listed some. And I said, "And that says, if you can't afford something, we have to pay for it." And then you add it to that. "I will get clarification for you." And then, you know, I asked when we could get a response. You agreed to two weeks at that point. And then Commissioner DeVorek, three different times, indicated we'd like to have answers to those questions as soon as possible. And then we received no answers to those questions. So if the answer is there is not a contractual relationship, that's okay. I just, I just want to know that that's the answer.
It's through the grant assurances that we all agreed to and signed
Okay, well, I mean, I have that.
To make that contractual agreement.
So the grant, I mean, I have all that response. You know, so you talked about how the FAA agrees to pay 90%. Okay, that doesn't say that Commissioners have to pay a change order. There's a part that says that it, it says the sponsor fund availability states, it has sufficient funds available for that portion of the project, which are not to be paid by the United States. It has sufficient funds available to assure operation. There's another part saying, like, what ODOT would cover. But there's nothing that specifically addresses a change order or why the Commissioners would have to input in an increased share if ODOT does not support a change order. So I'm just trying to get to the bottom of this.
I'm afraid I don't have an answer for you.
Okay, I mean, if, like I said, if the answer is just, hey, we need you to pay for this because we don't have the money in our account, I think that's, that's like a complete answer. I just want you to be, like, transparent and accountable and give that answer, rather than, like, trying to do these mental gymnastics about, you know, what the FAA share is and what the ODOT share is and so forth. Just, just like, give me a straight answer. Like, I appreciate direct communication, and that's all that I'm asking for.
I don't have a response.
Patty, could you help us with this at all? Come on up.
Well, Rick is the airport manager here. I'm simply an outreach, maybe outreach coordinator, but I do understand that the operating agreement between the airport and the county does state that you will match grants up to $25,000 a year. We didn't take any grant matches this year, so this would be the first one we're asking for.
You received $800,000.
That was not a grant match. That was a grant. That was a grant from this board. So this is a grant match that is contractually obligated, and I'm not sure that we're even going to be asking for it. We're simply giving you a heads-up that there is a change order. This is what the change order is. This is how much would be necessary. But the project is not complete. And when the project is complete, there may be some overages that will cover this, and you may not have to put anything towards it.
No, I, I understand that. I mean, I'm, what my concern is, is about the relationship. And we received a quarterly report saying that we are, where we have to pay for this increased share of the change order. And so I'm just trying to get to the bottom of the justification for why.
That wasn't the intent of that. That line in the quarterly report was just that this may occur.
Okay, that's not how I read it.
And then, then, you know, what your specific question is, is, is there a contractual obligation? And yes, there is.
Where would I find that information?
It's in the operating agreement. It was done in 2013, I believe.
Okay, when could you get me that information? Like, like, point me to a specific section.
Sure.
Of, when can I expect a response on that?
I can try to pull it up today and get it back to you.
Okay. So again, Commissioner DeVorek, you asked for this information three times on our meeting of September 16th. So I'm again going to move to table item number six until we can finally get a response to this question regarding change orders.
That would put us in a very difficult position because the contractor has done work, work that you've already approved.
I understand. I asked for this information back in August. So the urgency is not mine as far as when this gets paid.
So you would rather a contractor that has been loyal to the project go without pay?
That's, that's a your problem, not a my problem. My problem is, I want an answer to a question, and I was promised that on September 16th. I was promised I would get an answer in two weeks. I have read the operating agreement. I don't see where it says that, so that's why I'm asking for you to provide that information.
Because it definitely says that.
Okay, that would be great. I don't know why I couldn't have received that back in August when I asked the question.
It's the first time I've been asked a question.
Can this wait one more week, or is this time-sensitive?
Very time-sensitive.
Time-sensitive.
I mean, Commissioner DeVorek, of course, they're gonna say it's time-sensitive, but it's not so time-sensitive. Like, the only, the only leverage we have is money. So to the extent, like, if we just keep giving them money and we don't get answers to our questions, like, that's just how this relationship's gonna go forward. So my suggestion is, we hold the money until they answer our questions. And these are, that's not an unreasonable question to ask.
No, it's not an unreasonable question, but it is unreasonable to withhold money from a contractor that has put their people to work, that has boosted the economy of this county, and we're gonna withhold money from them because you need a question answered? I'm not sure I follow that logic.
That's the only leverage I have.
What do you need leverage for?
Well, because I want, I want you to answer my question. And I keep asking these same questions over and over again in sessions.
We should get together, because I can go through the operating agreement with you, and maybe you would understand it a little better.
I, I, I mean, I have read the operating agreement. I'm just asking to point to a specific section that addresses these change orders.
Okay, so, okay. Well, we can do that, but if you've read the operating agreement, it is in there.
Again, I'm, I was told, I was promised at the September 16th meeting I would have a specific answer to my question. I still have not received an answer. That is all I'm asking. Like I said, I asked these questions beginning of August. I don't understand what the holdup is.
Well, I think Mr. Blamer thought he answered your question, so.
I don't think, I don't, he knows he did not answer my question.
I'll get you a specific answer.
I appreciate that.
And don't put words into my mouth. I did, I thought I had answered the question with, by pointing out specific sections of all of our agreements.
I asked three specific questions, usually in an email. Like, if someone asks me three specific questions, I reply back, "Answers unread below." And I answer all the questions. Like, one of my questions was, when, like, did the Commissioners approve this change order? And, I mean, there was never an answer to that. I think I kind of got one out at that September meeting, is that we never did approve the change order. You said your Board didn't even approve the change order. So I just want, like I said, I just want direct communication. And then, I don't, you know, I don't see what the holdup is. Like, I just, I don't want there to be misrepresentations about the obligations of the parties.
Commissioner DeVorek, for a second, can I ask you for a motion on the resolution as written?
What resolution?
The, the way it's written here for number, on number six, I would like to move forward, make a motion as written.
Patty, can you guarantee that Commissioner Ray will have this information this afternoon?
I'll get her the information this afternoon.
Because for the sake of the contractors and airport getting over a million dollars, and ODOT share is 33.8, and county match is 33.8, I hate to see the contractors out in the wind. But again, we have to have better communication. It has to be more information faster than ever before.
I would point out, Commissioner DeVorek, is we're gonna have a meeting on Tuesday.
Yes, it's six days from now.
Yes, so it's, it's, we don't have to wait a full week like normal. There would be a meeting on Tuesday. So if we delayed this approval until Tuesday, perhaps I could get an answer to my question between then and now.
Well, I really think that Rick and Patty can give you the answers this afternoon. Patty's a person of her word. And I, I think it's a good deal for our share being 33.8 to get over a million dollars. So I second the motion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any discussion on it? I don't.
Commissioner Fiddler.
Aye.
Commissioner Breckin.
No.
Commissioner DeVorek.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
I'll read item number seven. The Berkshire Local School Director of People's Services, Ashley Borzowski, is requesting the Board approve and execute a letter of support for state capital funding to complete the Vocational Workforce Training Hub and Student and Family Wellness Resource Center on the co-shared Kent State University Geogga Campus. Hi, Ashley.
Hi.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. Good morning. We are seeking a letter of support. Between Berkshire campus and the Kent Geogga campus, there's a garage. It's, it's mostly just used for storage now. Backstory, I started the Badger Lab Vocational Program for students with disabilities so that they could learn some pre-employment skills and go out and be successful citizens in, in the workforce. And that has taken off through the years. That was when I was an intervention specialist at Berkshire. And the program has grown so much, we've, we've run out of, you know, space to do what we do. And so we were looking to turn that garage into, do any of you know what the Shire Shack is? It's a community resource for free clothing. We're, move that there, which is currently at Abundant Life, the old Berkshire Elementary. We run a mobile food pantry for, for the community, so we're also looking to house that in that hub. And an apartment living space for the students to learn life skills, as well as a teaching space and kitchen. All of that would be within the apartment. And we're not asking for any money from, from you all, just, just a letter of support so this project could maybe get funded by a grant we're applying for. I'm not super great at talking in front of a lot of people, so I thought maybe.
You're doing amazing.
Read through this. Just, the, the program has really taken off. It's not just for students with disabilities. It's turned out it's helped students of all abilities. And then if you look through some of our partners, you know, we have a lot of support from the community. And we also have students coming to Berkshire from Cardinal, Chagrin, West Geogga have come. We support the Board of DD. We have Kinston students. So this, this hub would be open after hours to support Adult Day service programs from DD, Solid Rock. They have a new one called Spark within Burton. So it wouldn't just be for Berkshire. It's for everyone and families. Hopefully, that sums it up pretty well.
Who owns the facility? Is it Berkshire or is it Kent State?
I think it's co-shared. I'm not sure. I don't.
I mean, I, it doesn't really matter for the, for the sake of our agenda item. I was just kind of curious how you were describing it.
Yeah, I, I think at the bottom here, that's kind of like a my boss question. I think somehow we have an agreement to co-share it. But I know both of our, both of us have storage in there currently. Yeah, that's a, that's a John Soder question. Sorry.
Well, I know you're, you do amazing work.
Thank you.
And the Berkshire lab really helps different businesses when they hire your employees through your program.
We have, it's pretty amazing because we have a lot of students that graduated out of our program that are employed within the community. Vinnie's, we have people working at the, the oil change place in Chardon. He's, Ralph supports our program. We have students that work in his facilities as well. So I don't know. I'm grateful for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move to approve item number seven.
Second.
Commissioner Fiddler.
Aye.
Commissioner Breckin. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Yep.
Have a great day.
Thanks. Morning. How are you, Celeste?
Celeste Walling, to the Auditor's Office. I was here recently for the proposals to put out for bid. And we're to the point now where we are wanting to do negotiations to contract with Fiddler Technologies based on the rankings that was done between myself and ADP. They seem to be the ones that are the most, lowest and best. So I'm here just to ask for you to authorize me to do those negotiations.
Okay, so it's for the negotiations? Because I was gonna ask, I see there's three different pricing options that are provided. So what pricing option? Do you know at this point what you're going with?
I do not.
Okay.
I, I know I'm going hosted. I don't know if it's gonna be a per-document fee or a flat rate yet.
Okay.
It's gonna be part of the negotiations.
I thought the, the way you guys handled the scoring metric, like, the rubric and had all the, the different factors in the spreadsheet, I thought that was very helpful because it's, it's not like a straight apples-to-apples comparison. It's not like who's pushing the snow on the parking lot. You know, there's obviously a variety in the different packages. And I thought the way you did that evaluation reflected those differences. And so I appreciated that. I thought it was well-done and, and like, a transparent process.
Thank you.
Could you just describe briefly, like, the software and how, how it's used in your office?
So every day, to record documents, we have a vendor software that when somebody comes to the counter, we stamp it, we scan it, we index it, and then it's then later sent for microfilm for preserving it. So it's all done through the software of that system, done daily by the staff.
And this is your, your incumbent provider, essentially, correct?
Yes.
And you're, you're happy with this software and?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not currently hosted with this company.
Right, I did see there was the migration cost.
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, so you're just going through a hosted product instead of what you're using currently?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve item number eight.
Second.
Commissioner Fiddler.
Aye.
Commissioner Breckin.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVorek.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Carmella.
Hello.
Carmella Shea, Jogger Soil and Water. Uh, the first item I have here is, um, the 2026 Ohio Department of Agriculture Office of Farmland Preservation Application for Local Sponsor Certification. Um, this is so that we can, we as the county can apply for farmland preservation, uh, projects for 2026.
Uh, good trip.
Second.
Commissioner Spitaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Yes.
The next item was, uh, uh, we had a, back in February, uh, there was a violation against a, uh, property owner who had created a dirt bike track and hadn't followed the proper regulations and procedures. Um, so we went through the whole process. Um, the prosecutor, uh, took, took it, tried to enforce action, ended up going to a pre-trial hearing. We sat down with the judge and the representative for the owner and Sheila Salem, our APA for Soil and Water, and we came to a judgment entry, um, for them to basically keep a silt fence up if they're going to continue to use the facility or as a dirt bike track. Right now, the track is completely voluntarily seeded. Uh, they did seed it, but everything is all seeded.
It looks, it's not quite, quite an eyesore. Yeah, when you drive by.
You drive by. Yeah, it's, it's all green now.
Yes.
Um, so basically the judgment entry is agreeing or, uh, having them agree to keep it in the state that you see it, that it is vegetated if for some reason it, uh, that you have silt fence there just in case they do start using it as a dirt, dirt bike track again, that the sediment gets captured. Um, if they choose to abolish using it, then they can remove the silt fence. But this basically enables us, if they ever do anything, we can go right to the judgment entry instead of starting the process all over again.
If then process, right?
Yes.
If you do this, then you need to do this.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, I got it.
So it's like wrap the process up. We agreed, everybody agreed, and the homeowners are, you know, all agreed to this.
Okay, very good. I move to approve item number 10.
Second. Any more discussion? Second. Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Elaine Walker, Maci, Community and Economic Development. Um, I have a, item number 11 on the agenda, and that is the Department of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Ohio Department of Development Building Demolition and Site Revitalization Program Subrecipient Agreement between the Jogga County Board of Commissioners and Chardon Local Schools Board of Education in the amount of $433,315.
Elaine, who drafted the agreement?
Uh, Laura did.
Okay. I, I asked, cause there was like a minority hiring requirement that I thought was.
That's in the grant agreement.
Okay, that's what I wondered. If that was based on the grant agreement, is that why it came in? Okay.
Yeah.
And.
And I do have, I do have a copy. Um, I was able to get that from Chardon Schools of the, um, Millstone is their contractor.
Okay.
And, um, they've got all the requirements in their contract with that, so.
Is this a reimbursement grant?
It is a reimbursement grant, yes.
So Chardon Schools have already paid for this?
Yes, they've already paid for it. Actually, the work, the demo portion of it is completely done. Um, they were allowed, according to the grant, to go ahead and do the work. So they're gonna submit, uh, full reimbursement. I've got that sitting on my desk, so as soon as we're ready to go.
I move to approve item number 11.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Spitaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
Charles Tekech, the Maintenance Department. Um, I have two items on the agenda, um, items 12 and 13. Both are construction contract executions. Uh, the first one, item number 12, is the Maintenance Department is requesting the board approve and execute the construction agreement with V.L. Chapman Electric Incorporated for the Westyaga Senior Center MSI Wastewater Treatment Plant Standby Generator Installation in the amount of $198,699.06. Uh, the bid bond submitted shall be held to serve as the performance bond for this project.
Remind me, does that include the, um, the replacement of the automatic transfer switch?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I move to approve item number 12.
Second. Any more discussion?
Commissioner Spitaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Yes.
Okay, and then item number 13 is the Maintenance Department is requesting the board approve and execute the construction agreement with Ohio Paving and Construction Company Incorporated for the Jogga County Safety Center Parking Lot Repave, Repave in the amount of $847,682.06. The bid bond submitted shall be held to serve as the, as the performance bond for this project.
Did they, um, produce, uh, proof that they have the drug-free workplace?
They did.
With, with the names of the employees and that they passed their last drug test and so on and so forth?
Well, they didn't provide the names of the employees. They provided the, uh, program for which they are, uh, uh, they are enrolled in, uh, with the Bureau of Workers Compensation. And so I provided in the package a letter from the Bureau, um, approving them in the program and the steps that they need to follow to stay approved in the program. So there's, uh, one, two, three, four, five items that they need to follow to, in order to stay in the program.
Could you email that to me?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, could you just do like a 30-second overview? Cause I remember there were some changes to the parking lot based on the current reconfiguration, right? It's not just a complete repaved. Is that correct?
It is a complete repave except for on the back of the parking lot where the sheriff's cars park.
Yeah.
Um, over there by the retention pond, there's going to be additional spaces added for parking for the sheriff cars.
All right. That's what I was trying to remember. I thought there was something a little bit different. Okay, very good.
And how many places are full-depth repair?
Our.
Full-depth repair of the parking lot?
The entire area except for the new, uh, the new spaces along the retention pond. So the entire parking lot will be FDR. Yep.
Um, so I move to approve item number 13.
Second. Any more discussion?
Commissioner Spitaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm Liz Reno with Maintenance Department, and I have number 14. The Maintenance Department is requesting the board award the bid to U.S. Lawns. Cleveland East Deandre Landscaping Design for the Snow Plowing, Salting and or Sandering of the Jogga County Parking Lots, Chardon Area. There's five locations for the 2025, 2027 seasons in the amount of $108,600. That's $54,300 for 2025, 2026, and $54,300 for 26, 27. And salt at $165 per ton in the amount of $40,000 for not to exceed amount of $148 for the two-year period as they represent the lowest and best bid.
Now, you might not know this answer, but is this typical to only get two bids for the snow plowing? I would just think there's so many companies in this area.
Put it out to bid.
That's all, I mean, I get that, but is that?
That too, sure.
Yeah, I was just surprised there was only two people that were interested. There's just a lot of, a lot of companies that push snow around here. Okay.
Glenn, Glenn, what's the historical part? Do we only get two or three?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, Glenn, our Jogga County Maintenance Department, uh, usually it's typically about two, three. I think in one year I did see four. So, but it's, it's basically locals around the area, so they're not driving all around trying to.
Yeah.
Of, uh, the gas and everything with that.
Thank you.
I move to approve item number 14.
Any more discussion?
Commissioner Spitaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Yes.
Thanks for the day.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning.
Hello.
Nick Goris, Water Resources. Uh, first item for us on the agenda is requesting the board approve and execute a contract maintenance form number two, increasing a service contract with Bill Conti Plumbing for repair at the Parkman Wastewater Treatment Plant and additional funds for possible additional services. So basically increasing our use with, uh, Mr. Conti's company to do, um, plumbing and backflow and testing around our facilities.
I move to approve.
Second. Any more discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Commissioner Spitaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is requesting the board approve and authorize Commissioner Spitaler, authorized representative to execute the request for partial payment number four for Shook Construction Company for the McFarland Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvement Project in the amount of $478,812, uh, even. We're projects about 17 to 18% complete at this point in time, uh, moving along, uh, not without its issues, which we'll get to next, but.
And you reviewed that in wish you would be correct. Um, I move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Aye. Commissioner Spitaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Yes.
Uh, next item on the agenda, uh, is requesting the board approve Contract Change Order Number One, increasing the contract with Shook Construction Company for the McFarland Wastewater Treatment Plant Project in the amount of $140,779.06. And further authorize Commissioner Spitaler, authorized representative to execute the WPCLF and WSLSRA Contract Change Order Form. Uh, in totality, it's a net increase to the contract of $140,000. We did have some decreases to it, uh, changing out manufacturers for our tertiary equipment, uh, recommending to go from what we, uh, proposed in the plans to the manufacturer saying use ours. It's a better product and it's cheaper. We've also have a, a deduct for changing, um, the pipe material from a concrete to an H, you know, HDPE material, which saved us some monies in there. That was a deduction. And then we rerouted the, um, um, rerouted the, uh, 48-inch effluent pipeline for better service down, uh, down the road for expansion. There was a little concern when we wanted to add a additional ring to the oxidation ditch, it would have been an interference. So we proactively pushed that out. Um, we also had a deduct change order in there, a work directive, uh, changing out some insulation. Um, but the big one here is, uh, where the ads were, uh, in digging for the Headworks facility. Uh, the best way for me to explain it, soil conditions, it was kind of like a moon pie. We were solid on top, solid on the bottom, but in the middle, we ended up with a lot of smush. So we had to, uh, increase the, uh.
Is that a technical term?
SCF smush. We'll go with smush. But we had to increase the retainer system, the whalers and the sheet piling in order to be able to build the Headworks facility. Um, there was some concern once we actually got down to the bottom whether we were actually gonna have solid soils and, and we did, so.
Or more smush.
We were hoping, you know, we're so close to McFarland Creek that it's, you know, the, the, the alluvial and the sediment drops. It's, we could drill a hole 25 feet away and be in perfect soil, so. Um, so yeah, that, that's where the big piece of this is, is the soil conditions. We're through it. We're moving forward. Um, we're actually, uh, pouring our mud mat for that building and we'll be coming out of the ground on that, keeping us back. That's good.
I move to approve item number 17.
Second. Any discussion? Vote.
Aye. Commissioner Spitaler. Commissioner Braking.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thanks, Nick.
Hi Craig. Good morning.
Good morning. What season is it, Jim?
That's, oh.
You're pushing under the scarf.
Awesome.
It's 40 degrees this morning.
Elvis always had a scarf too when he was performing, so.
Yeah, we, I can't quite live up to that.
Oh.
Well, first I, uh, just wanted to be here and support like 18 and 19 together. Um, um, if you haven't met, Kerry Dotson, Executive Director of Lifeline Inc. in Lake County, but also serves, already serving Jogga County. Um, Jogga JFS has been working in partnership with Lifeline for a number of years as certain state programs and federal programs have been transitioning out of Jogga JFS, um, to Lifeline. Um, but this designation, and I, hopefully you all are in receipt of the brief that I, um, emailed to you guys, just kind of giving you the background on this and how it'll help Lifeline. But, um, not only does Kerry, um, run a phenomenal organization, Kerry is a phenomenal person, and, uh, I know we're gonna do a little presentation, um, but then follow that up with a recommendation that we'll discuss afterwards.
You have the floor.
Thank you for having me. Uh, as Craig said, I'm Kerry Dawson. I'm the Executive Director at Lifeline. Um, I have been with Lifeline for almost 25 years, so a lot of times that helping people. Um, I'm just gonna go through the PowerPoint because I have a copy of it in that folder I gave you. A little bit of our history, we were founded in 1973 and became a, um, with the mission of providing emergency assistance in life space for any of the people I love. Um, in 1980, we became a participative, the United Way. Uh, 1987 is when we became designated as Lake County Community Action Agency. In 2008, we were certified as a mental health agency by the, is now the Ohio Department of Behavioral Health. Um, and then in 2020 is when we received the interim designation as Jogga County's Community Action. So we've been serving in Jogga County since January 1st of 2020. Um, we had just opened our office when COVID hit and everything kind of hit the brakes. Um, as far as our programming goes, our mission is to lead the fight against poverty by empowering community members to achieve self-sufficiency and by overall improving the quality of life for all residents. Um, our board believes that self-sufficiency means something different to every individual that we serve. So depending where they are on the spectrum, some are, you know, maybe just need some job training to get a better living wage job. Some, you know, may be homeless and have a long way to go before they can do that. Um, so we kind of work with them where they are, um, through our programs to advance them. Um, in Lake and Jogga Counties, we currently offer over 25 different programs and kind of tackling poverty from every different angle. Our funding sources at present agency overall are operating budgets of about 4.5 million. Um, our funding sources include the City of Mentor, the Fiddler Foundation, the Jogga Fund, um, the Adams Board, the Lake County Commissioners fund us with three different, um, sources, uh, home investment partnership, community development block grant, and through our senior services levy and like. Uh, we receive funding from our Lake County Department of Job and Family Services. Um, and then we receive, um, quite a few different grants for the Ohio Department of Development, primarily in Jogga County, the Community Services Block Grant and Home Energy Assistance Program. Um, we also have Homeless Crisis Response Program funding for Jogga County as well, um, and then the United Way. Um, as we've integrated into Jogga County, as I said, we started serving January 1st of 2020. Um, our first, our first order of business was opening a full-time office out here in Jogga County. Obviously, we don't want Jogga residents to have to come to Lake for services. Uh, we do have an office in Newberry on Kinzman Road in the Business Park there, um, to serve Jogga County residents. We also offer services, um, throughout the county during tax season. One of our biggest programs in Jogga County that we got to is our tax program. Um, so we do that throughout the county. Um, we do home visits for homebound residents pretty regularly. And then we just signed a new partnership agreement to do, um, some programming out at Chagrin Falls Park. So, um, we're trying to, we know Jogga County has a big geographic footprint, so we're trying to reach people sort of where they are. We strive to do a lot of different outreach activities in Jogga County. We, we know we're kind of the new player in the county, and so we're trying to, um, form as many different partnerships and get our, our programming information out as, as much as possible. Um, we've done a lot of presentations over the last few years, um, at different civic groups, rotaries, you know, Qantas is that sort of thing. At local churches, we've done a lot of, of presentations at local churches. Um, we participated in a lot of different health and service fairs. So whatever we can do to kind of, to engage with the community more. Um, when we received the interim designation in 2020, we felt that it was really important to expand our board to include representation from Jogga County residents on our board. And so we do, um, have, uh, representation from the public, private, and nonprofit sectors in Jogga on our board. Um, I'd like to quickly introduce Brittany Sustar, um, is our board president. Uh, she works for Gogga Healthcare.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. As you mentioned, my name is Brittany Sustar.
Brittany, could I have you go to a microphone so we could?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, as you mentioned, my name's Brittany Sustar, lifelong resident of Jogga County. Um, also working at Jogga Medical Center, um, as a nurse, um, and serve as board chair for Lifeline. Uh, Lifeline is a wonderful community action agency that has made great impact on the community in both Lake and Jogga Counties. And I just want to echo everything that you said. Kerry does a phenomenal job and has a passion for serving others, and it shows in the great work that she does through Lifeline every day. Um, as a single mother, I found myself poverty-stricken and faced with challenges that I could not combat alone. Um, with the help and support of community services, I was able to achieve self-sufficiency, and I can honestly say that without those services, I would not be who I am today or where I am today. And I choose to serve as a board member and board chair to help pay it forward. Lifeline has great services that can provide support and help to improve the equality of life for our community residents, and I have a strong belief in the great work that they do every day. So, thank you.
I'd also like to introduce Joyce Taylor. Joyce is another of our board members. Um, she's appointed to our board by the Bainbridge Township Trustees.
Hi, good morning. My name is Joyce Taylor, and I'm a longtime resident of Bainbridge Township on Taylor May Road. And I am a recently retired registered nurse with a background of intensive care, care coordination, and, uh, quality and risk management. And this is actually my second time on the Lifeline ward. It is so important to me. I was on the board for about 11 years, and I termed out. And then now I was eligible to reapply, and so I did. So I'm excited to say I'm back on the board. And it's equally important now that we've moved into Jogga County, um, that I thought that it was very important to make sure we had solid Jogga County representation. So I'm pretty excited about that. And if you take a look, I saw that the 2025 Community Health Needs Assessment's not posted yet on the Jogga Department of Health. But if you look at the 2022 and you consider the programs that we have that are in your folder and what Kerry talks about, you'll see that we actually have programs targeted directly to the top priorities, specifically in the needs assessment, which I think is super important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, as far as the programming that we provide in Jogga County, um, we have quite a list. Um, we have a rental assistance program which helps folks secure safe and affordable rental housing through security deposits and response grant. The program also involves some financial literacy coaching, and, um, we do a property inspection to ensure that it meets health and safety standards. Um, we have the Homeless Crisis Response Program. Like I said, that's transitional housing for folks coming out of homeless experiences. Um, we recently worked with Crag to transition over the Home Energy Assistance Program. Um, so we just are in the process of completing our first summer crisis program. Uh, summer crisis seeks to keep people cool and comfortable in the summer, particularly our senior citizens or folks who need electricity for health reasons, so oxygen, refrigeration, that sort of thing. Uh, we will start winter crisis season on November 1st, and then we also do the, um, payment plan enrollments. Uh, we have an alternate utility assistance program that kind of supplements that in the off-season and also can cover water bills. So we work with your water departments, um, a bit on that. We have a property tax assistance program that is primarily for seniors to help, um, lower the cost of, uh, property taxes from, particularly for those who are struggling, um, with back, back taxes that are due. Um, a new program that we're launching this fall is, um, a senior snow plowing program. Um, it's a really good meetings with the Jogga Department on Aging, and they talked a lot about seniors who are at home and who have home outlays that come in or meals on wheels that delivers. And when there's a heavy snowfall and they can't get their driveway, but those people can't come. And so they're going without healthcare services. They're going without food. And to me, the really simple solution was let's just pay to get their driveway plowed, right? So, um, so that is a program that we'll be launching this fall, um, with direct referrals coming from the Department on Aging, um, for that. We are the weatherization intake site for Ashdabula Community Action. Ashdabula runs weatherization, I believe, for a five-county area, including Lake and Jogga. Um, and so instead of having Jogga County residents go to Ashdabula to apply, they just come to our office here in, in Newberry now. Um, as I mentioned, we do tax clinics January through April. We have a financial literacy program. We have asset development programs. Um, we run a representative PAYE program for folks that the Social Security Administration feels can't manage their own finances. Um, one of our biggest programs is our Jump Start Car Repair Program. That is really targeted at folks who need their car to get to work. We don't want anybody not going to work simply because their car is broken down. So, um, we get a lot of referrals from local businesses for that. And then some of our senior programming, Are You Okay? is a, um, a safety check program where folks can enroll in the program and they get a call every day to check that they're okay, that they haven't fallen or anything like that. Uh, if they don't respond, eventually it progresses. If they don't respond, eventually it progresses to the person, the police, the law, the visit. But primarily for pretty isolated homebound seniors. And then our Helping Hands for Seniors Program is designed for seniors who want to continue to live in their homes and maintain their independence, but need a little extra help to do it, right? So you might have a senior who can do laundry, but she can't carry the laundry basket up and downstairs, or can't get all the way out, you know, the garbage can all the way out to the street if the driveway's on, things like that. So we match them with volunteers that can help with those sort of things. Some of the partnerships and collaborations that we have joined in Jogga County since 2020, we're active with the Jogga County Housing Coalition and the Continuum of Care, both entities that work with housing. We are active with the Jogga County Pass Group that specializes in senior services, the Jogga Citizen Circle, which works on reentry issues, the Jogga Aware Coalition, the Jogga Metropolitan Housing Authority Program Coordinating Committee, the Community Health Improvement Planning with the, with the Health Department, and then a partnership, as I said, with Chagrin Falls Park. Some of our outcomes last year in 2024, we assisted 95 unduplicated Jogga County households. Some of them may have received services in different programs and multiple. As I said, our tax clinics are a bigger one. We served 41 Jogga County households last year, bringing in $36,405 in returns back into your community. So, and we have volunteers donate 95 hours for that. We're still wrapping up summer crisis, but to date, 69 households were approved through summer crisis, again, mostly senior citizens. 49 residents improved their transportation opportunities, so they continue to get reliably to work, 39 with car repairs, 10 with electric bikes. Those are for folks that can't or don't wish to drive. And then we did one purchase of a car through our asset development training. Then we did housing with 12 households. This is our impact data. It sort of shows some of the impacts of the programs, but I, I like it because it also shows the economic impact. So it lists some of the, and there's a bigger version of this in your packet, but it lists some of the companies that we work with. So we have federal dollars coming in, they go back out to your local businesses, right? So when we're helping a client with car repairs, they're working with a local mechanic. When we're helping somebody with housing, they're working with a local landlord. So this sort of shows some of the utility vendors and the mechanics and that sort of thing. It also shows that our client base in Jogga County is spread fairly well throughout the These are some of our success stories. I'm not going to read them to you word for word, but they are in your packet. So you can read them. And that's that. That's our contact information so that you know where to find us if you have any questions I have.
Well, I know personally, you guys do a great job. And when you took over in 2020, it just kept growing and growing and growing. So happy that you're in Newberry.
Yes.
And happy with the board, so.
And that's now a full-time office. It was a part-time office, so that's, that's growing. And I think this designation, as we move on to, I believe it's number 19, is only going to help bring in additional potential funding, but also resources and training and support from, you know, because they're not, they're not fully designated as Jogga's Community Action Agency. Will just further, you know, enable and support, provide additional trainings to her staff. I mean, all these things that she just listed, I mean, these are common sense things. These aren't, you know, these are every single thing that you listed in the stories that you tell, and the things, whether it's just helping a senior in a home get a driveway plowed. I mean, these are common sense things, but there, there aren't big, major federal programs or state programs that do that. But these are still needs in the community, but they, they help life move along. These aren't just simple handouts, they're hand-ups to, to help life move on and help people get places they need to go. And so what I just love about Lifeline and the things that they do, it's really common sense, and they really make a difference locally. And, and they're, almost everything is a local referral, you know? It, it really, it's not some big, heavy bureaucratic program, it's just common sense.
Carrie, how long have you taken, taken over the HEAP program?
We took over June 1st.
Yep.
June 1st. So we took over June 1st, started staff training, transition, summer crisis started July 1st. So we started seeing clients in July.
With the same staff member, Sue Stanley, who used to work at Jogga JFS, we actually transitioned her over to Lifeline. She is working in the Newberry office, and so it's literally just down the street. We were the last, at the time, we were the last JFS that even had that program under, yes, exactly. And so the, how Development Agency, Development Services Agency was really, just like hey, had pushed us to move Community Services Block Grant over to a Community Action Agency, the same thing was true of HEAP and PIP, so.
Craig, can you talk about what it would mean to be Jogga's Community Action Agency? I mean, you talked about there'd be more grant opportunities available for Lifeline.
But also support to her staff, especially the Jogga staff. And I know Carrie is still, you know, getting this designation, I mean, can, my understanding, it can open up some doors as far as funding, but also training for her staff, for the Jogga staff to continue to do the programs that they are. It provides support to that. Right now, they, they.
Training from who? From the state?
From the state or federal programs that they're, that they're not currently getting, just because they're not, they don't have that designation.
Okay. And I mean, I guess this is kind of an awkward question, but who, who would be Lifeline's competitors? I mean, I know they're nonprofits, so you don't think of it like a competitor, but essentially, if we said, eh, we don't like Lifeline, we want a different organization, who, who in the county is equipped to be that organization other than Lifeline?
To be honest with you, I can't really think of, of one that does what they do. I mean, they're, they're aligned with us. I mean, as far as like, we, we tried it, we've tried to do some of the things, and we partner with Lifeline. I mean, there could be, but there's, there are other designations, like Catholic Charities or.
Well, I mean, that's kind of what I was wondering, like, could United Way or Catholic Charities, could, could they provide these services?
Not really, because the, because my understanding is the Cleveland United Way has really pulled out a lot of the resources that they were previously providing to the Jogga United Way. I mean, they've really stepped away. And so this is really where Jogga is lacking in this type of support. I don't, I hate to say that they're like the only one, but I, I can't think of one, but they're willing to fill that void is what, the way I see it as. Carrie, I don't know if you see it differently.
And a little bit of history. So when we came out as interim Administrator in 2020, the state was pretty adamant at that time, I don't, I don't know if their position has changed since then, but they wanted an existing Community Action Agency to come in and serve, not build a new one. And so they, they kind of interviewed us and Ashdabula and Portage as we were all kind of contiguous. And it was all sort of mutually agreed that we were the best, that there's a lot of crossover between Lake and Jogga already with, with nonprofit agencies. And we had a lot of the relationships already built with, you know, folks like Craig. So, so that's how we were selected in 2020 as the interim.
Yeah, we, so, and this is just kind of the uniqueness of Jogga. When I first became Executive Director of Jogga JFS, we had, we were the only JFS left in the state. Number one, there wasn't a designate, at the time, there wasn't any designated Community Action Agency in Jogga. And we had a very unique board set up with JFS, when we had at the time, Community Services Block Grant, we had HEAP, we had PIP, summer, summer and winter crisis. But we were the only game in town as a JFS that, in the state that had that setup. 2018, 19 comes around, and the state, through the developmental services, is like, we got to move Community Services Block Grant out of JFS. And it was a really strange situation, and that's when, if you recall, I know you weren't, but Bob Voss was around, and he was trying to set up a, a Community Action Agency. He, he was really trying to do it, but there wasn't enough administrative funds, at my understanding at the time, for him to get staffing. And so it's really, like I said, it's kind of been, to your question, this void where no one really has stepped up, or it didn't work out, and it just, it didn't exist. And so now we have this opportunity, and they're willing to grow here in the county. And so I just think it's, it's the best fit.
I mean, it's, it sounds like that. I guess, but, you know, my only question is, should we offer this? Should we allow other organizations to apply? You know, some sort of process to see if anyone else wants to step up before we make this designation?
You can always, I mean, I, I think it's something that you can change. I don't think, I'm just saying, I don't, I don't think it's like an automatic, this is forever.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm just one person, right? I, they are willing to do it. I would give them the designation. I mean, we've made the declaration, if someone else wants to step up, but I, I wouldn't hold off just because there isn't another person. That's my opinion. And I, and I, I mean, but I respect your, obviously, your.
I just always like choices, you know? I'm not given a choice. But I mean, I, I understand, it seems like a good choice. Like, I, I'm not disparaging anything about Lifeline, it seems like.
Competition is always a good thing, I get it.
And, and I mean, it seems like the programs are like, I mean, really innovative and responsive to community needs. So I, you know, I don't have anything negative to say about anything of what we've seen today. I just, you know, wonder what the other.
I understand. And I, I know, I mean, she's here today. I know Carrie, if you wanted her, and I'm sorry if I'm talking for you, give them an annual report to, to, to you guys and, and be accountable and open. I'm sorry. I know you'd be willing to do that.
Anything that you would like, or, you know, any, anything.
Okay. And then, I mean, I guess the other question is, like, what, what obligation is there from the county financially to Lifeline with this?
None.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just your support.
Yeah, just kind of a designation.
I mean, we just, as far as, I know that she works also very closely with Sarah Schittiger from my, who's on my staff, especially with the buy, with the buy car program, especially in the fixing up and the car repair, which speaks, you know, near and dear to my heart because everyone talks about the need of transportation in this county. And so, and these are real clients that walk in our doors that need this stuff. So, you know, I mean, and, and I know she, Carrie's already very well-known in the county. I mean, again, there's no doubt in my mind that this is going to help move Jogga County forward.
And in 20, either 19 or 20, there was a big meeting at the Chesterman Library.
Yep.
And the state come in, and they recommended that Jogga would, you know, go with Lifeline, Lake County to provide services. And if anybody else had come in any smaller, at the time, the state was saying that, that whatever group that comes in cannot spend any more money than 6% for administration.
There's, yeah.
Well, you're so stable and stabilized that you have trained people to do these services. So you're keeping up with the state's requirements.
Yeah, and I, I guess I'll point out to your point, our grant for Jogga County is only $260,000. So all of those programs I listed are, are what we're doing with that $260,000.
Oh, no kidding.
So, so very little, as you said, is, is spent on administration and operating. It's, it's primarily going back out to local businesses and.
Yeah.
Local residents.
I make a motion to have a letter endorsement for Jogga County to be in Lifeline. Second. Any more discussion?
Just, just to clarify, the, the, I mean, you're asking for this designation of the CAA, right? Is that, is that what your motion is?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Spitalary?
Yes.
Commissioner Braking?
Aye.
Yes.
And I know there was a proposed letter that I sent forward. Is that also?
I have in my hand.
Wonderful, thank you. Because Carrie, you need to submit that, you submit and forward that on to the state.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay, moving on to item number 20, the Emergency Management Agency is requesting the board move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment of a public employee pursuant to ORC 121.22G2.
Still move.
Second.
Commissioner Spitalary?
Aye.
Commissioner Braking?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBork?
Yes. And who will be in?
We will have Austin and Kathy joining us.
Okay.
Okay.
We're back with action.
Okay, we're returning at 11.
Okay.
Austin Rice EMA. First thing here is requesting the board to approve the promotion of Brandon Reed to the position of Deputy Director, Emergency Management Agency, number 1711, to be effective on October 20th, 2025, at the rate of 34, 45 per hour, grade 14E, step six. The employee shall serve a 180-day probationary period in the new position.
I move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Vote.
Commissioner Spitalary?
Aye.
Commissioner Braking?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBork?
Yes.
Thank you. And a second item here, Emergency Management Agency is requesting the board to grant permission to advertise for the position of Planner/Trainer, number 1712, assuming Mr. Reed accepts the position of Deputy Director. This position will remain posted until 5.
I move to approve.
Aye. Second. Any more discussion? Vote.
Commissioner Spitalary?
Aye.
Commissioner Braking?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBork?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Brandon.
Item number 21, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board accept the OPER Statement of Prior Service for Deputy County Administrator Mark Jimmison of 1.394 years.
Is Mark here? Mark, what did you do during the summer that you got the service for? I'm just nosy. You don't have to tell us if you don't want.
Yeah, no, I, I worked for the Village of Moreland Hills Road Department.
Okay.
Basically, majority of the job was the garbage man.
Okay.
Is what I did. But when we were done with the route, we did other jobs, roadsides and stuff like.
Yeah, I mean, I figured it was a summer job just based on the, the paperwork, so I was just.
And no, I, I was in a, a garbage truck studying for law school exams, because I was taking night courses at that.
You might be the only person to ever do that.
Yeah. On our way to the dump, I had my notes.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Vote.
Commissioner Spitalary?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
And then item number 22, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve an unpaid personal leave of absence for Mark Jimmison, Deputy County Administrator, during the period of October 23 to 24, 2025, and October 28 through November 11, 2025, for time not covered by accrued vacation time.
I move to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
No, I mean, I just think, I was going to say, I, he disclosed us these planned leave before he was hired, and we're just lucky to have him, I think, hit the ground running when he, as soon as he can.
Yes, thank you.
Good point. Vote.
Commissioner Spitalary?
Aye.
Commissioner Braking?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBork?
Yes. Item 23, public comment. Those wishing to make a comment or ask a question on matters concerned, please raise your hand and wait to be called upon. Begin by standing your full name and address, and we'll have up to three minutes to comment or ask a question. And we kindly ask that you refrain from disorderly or disruptive conduct. State your name, please.
Howard Southrop Philly. On October 13th, we celebrated the 250th anniversary of the founding of the United States Navy. We're all here today enjoying our good life because of what the people that served before us and serve now have done before. So let's keep in mind, the, the Navy was founded even before the country was founded. Thank you.
Good point. Anybody else? Okay. Okay, we'll move into item 24, board discussion.
Uh, yes, so item 24 is a revisitation of the discussion from last session about the magistrate benches. So we do have representation from NV5 and TDA. They are going to come and present some additional supporting documentation, as well as potential and present some additional supporting documentation as well as potential solutions for that item from last week's agenda that was tabled. We can help you plug in, yes, there's just a.
Do you know, does sound pick up from that podium? I know, I didn't see a microphone there.
There is.
There it is, okay. Oh, good. I can't see it, but there we go.
You'll have to turn it on.
Did they put the batteries back into it? Because it was.
The bottom.
On the bottom, there's a button on the very bottom. And then you have to Bluetooth it.
Y'all double check me. I'm not the best with this.
Yep.
Okay, there we go. What's the mic for this? Okay. Morning.
Brad Gallant from TDA. We're here to discuss the, the court's request to add a gate at the magistrate courtroom. Just kind of go over the history of that and discuss whether it was a design error or not. Thank you. First, I just wanted, is that large enough to see or should I make that bigger?
Yeah, I think it needs to be bigger, probably. It's hard to see just here sitting right there.
Oops, sorry. Wrong thing. This, this is just an excerpt from notes that we had three years ago, and really discussing the magistrate court and how they have, in the magistrate courtroom, there's more tension. They actually have more, you know, and talking to Sergeant Copeland at the time, he said that's where it's more likely to have violence occur. The discussions can get quite heated, such as if there's a child custody case and the father is, we're upset with the, I'm just, I'm not picking on the father, but say it's the father who doesn't get custody, can be very angry and sometimes, you know, they can be worried about their own physical safety. So in, in the courtroom, we are looking at, there is, there's a bench to chambers egress, where you, you come onto the bench from the chambers and then egress through the chambers. And there's a bulletproof panel in front of the, the court, in front of the bench, so that the judge can even duck and, and get out the door if there's an incident. So that, that was the security thought behind that, that courtroom. The controversy comes in, in, on the second floor, the court is, it was unclear whether it's going to be shared or not shared. And when this design was approved, the third magistrate was not identified. And we, we had a door into that courtroom from an adjacent office to, it could be used for a future magistrate, but there wasn't a designated magistrate at the time. So, I mean, and just some of the advantages of the bench to chambers, it, it separates the judges from the litigants. You know, it limits exposure to the, of the judge in contentious proceedings. It does get immunity egress and also just maintains the dignity of the judge, you know, up on a podium from the other and simplifies security protocol. So this does align with judicial security practices and traditional decorum expectations and reduces risk management. So many states have this kind of guideline. So, you know, we went through many iterations of the magistrate's court. And, and we did email the plans to the judges. We got a response from Judge Paskey on the drawings. We got an email from Judge Paskey approving the drawing.
So Brad, can I, can I ask a question? So my understanding is there were earlier drawings in which these gates were drawn that Judge Paskey has, and then at some point the gates were removed. So could you tell me about that process? Like, who decided they should be removed?
It was really discussions whether or not the, the magistrate court would be shared or not. And the gate really wasn't.
There's another magistrate court where it, you know, there was never a discussion about it being shared, right?
Right. I, I think it was actually some of the discussions about security and, and concern with, you know, what Sergeant Copeland had mentioned and, and the idea that it was a contentious environment. And that's, and that was where mostly an incident could occur.
Okay. So explain to me the, that second floor magistrate courtroom, where there are the two doors in the back to go to the two different magistrate's office. And you're saying, like, we weren't sure what that second magistrate, you know, what's now Randy, going to be Randy Taylor's office, right?
Right.
Why was the, what, like, tell me about the decision to still leave the door there, but not have a gate so that he can access the bench?
That was there, so in the future, if you wanted to add a, a third magistrate, it'd give them a way in. And then, yes, a, a gate probably would have been needed at that point.
I mean, that just, to me, because I can understand with the other magistrate's courtroom, I understand what you're saying as far as, you know, the contentious litigation and so forth, why you maybe want this solid space. That makes sense to me. But the one where there is the two, the office on either side of the courtroom, and then both offices have a door into the courtroom, but there's no way for the, the one office to actually get behind the bench. That design, that just, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me why it would be done that way.
But.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, that it adds flexibility later, but then why wouldn't you design the bench with the gate to actually be able to use that flexibility?
Well, when we did this courthouse, the, you know, the, the Ohio Judicial, the Ohio Courts mentioned that it was this courtroom, this court, the present courthouse had the least, the worst security.
No, I understand the whole, I understand all the justifications for why, you know, why we got into this courthouse expansion. I just don't understand for this specific, like, why would you leave the door there? Because that's, that seems like people in the courtroom could go in that door.
It's a secure door.
Okay, so it's a secure door. But, so that person can get out and then they're just in the general area. They can't actually get behind the bench, so they have to go all the way through the other magistrate's courtroom to, I, I just, seems like a very stra, would you agree that's a very strange design as it's done now?
I would say if, with a third magistrate, it's a third, it's a strange design. We didn't, the, the reason we found out about this was not until last August, when the magistrates started walking through and said, well, what about this? I mean, as, as you know, I mean, we had multiple approvals and sign-offs, including, including this body. So we're all guilty then. I mean, everyone had a chance to look at the drawings, including the sheriff. Everyone approved the drawings, so.
No, I mean, that, that part I agree with you on. Yeah, I mean, I think that's problematic for.
If it were brought up, we would have changed it. And we, we did come up with a design that has been priced to remedy the situation. So I think we were very responsive. You know, unfortunately, we, we can't read minds and don't know, you know, as architects, we can see things that sometimes we assume other people can see. And obviously Judge Paskey didn't read the plan the same way. But there were multiple people reviewing the drawings, so, you know, we thought people knew what they were getting.
Yeah. Yeah. The other question I have, I understand from the judges that this was flagged fairly early in the construction phase of the magistrate's bench. And then the construction kept going, kept proceeding even after it was flagged. And so that kind, that concerns me if that's true.
Well, it, it took time to come up with a remedy, to, to design the, the, I mean, it was the end of last August, so it wasn't that far, that long ago.
Right. But in that process, my understanding is, so this got, you know, kind of a timeout, like, hey, what's going on with this magistrate bench? And then the magistrate bench construction continued. And so, and now we have to rip all this out, so.
It's one short wall. It's not, it's not ripping out the whole bench. And, you know, Infinity was trying to maintain the job schedule. I mean, I, I'm not sure why they put that last piece in.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it may have been the first, first court done, and that, that's why. So until they had a decision and to know what to do, that's, you know, unfortunately, that was the, the wall was finished.
Okay.
I don't think it was an oversight on anyone's part. It was just partly the momentum of, of the construction.
Can you talk a little bit about, like, some of the solutions? I know this was the first piece, like, presenting some of the additional, you know, documentations in terms of drawings and approvals, like, prior approvals that have been done years before. But what are some of the solutions to getting this item addressed from your perspective?
Physically or?
Financially.
Well, you know, as we, as I pointed out, we're not admitting this is a design error because this was approved. As, as a good faith gesture, you know, you've discussed with me a crosswalk design for this building to the hospital. And as a pro bono effort, we'll work with you on that design.
That's one option. All right, we appreciate that. I mean, I did talk to the judges yesterday, because part of me was thinking, the second floor courtroom where you have the two offices, I mean, to me, that's, it's almost kind of unusable for that one magistrate right now. So that, to me, clearly needs to be changed. But I was like, the other ones, maybe we just, they, you know, they sign off on these drawings, they have to deal with it. But the judges are very strongly want these gates to be added. And they, I talked to Adrian about this. The judges have what's called the courthouse donation fund. Is that correct?
Yes.
And this is a fund that is not funded by taxpayer dollars. It is a fund that is a result of a class action settlement. And the fund is a restricted fund. Am I using that terminology correct? It's a restricted fund. It can only be used for courthouse improvements. And this seems like.
At the discretion of the judges.
At the discretion of the judges. And, and I received an email yesterday from Judge Paskey indicating that both herself and Judge Rambo are on board to use that fund to pay for these gate additions so that, you know, they get the courtroom that they want. I think, I think that's a good solution. They get what they want. And taxpayers aren't on the hook. Because I mean, I don't know who screwed up on this. It's like, everyone's kind of pointing fingers. But I know it's not the taxpayer. And so I, I like a solution in which they are not on the hook for the, the change.
We appreciate that effort.
Well, I like your, your offer, because we've been talking about a crosswalk for three years now, so, to the hospital.
Yeah, I mean, I think I just applied that to Amy recently with the Wellness Trail being opened. I think that's a nice, you know, thing for our, our employees to be able to use during their, their lunch hour or whatever, get your steps in. And so that would be a safe way for them to cross the, cross the street.
Okay. So it sounds like this is a non-agenda item in terms of putting it back on as a change order? Do we have an agreement?
Yes, put it back on as a change order. And then Adrian, you're gonna, you'll figure out what we need to do with this courthouse fund so that the judges are essentially compensating for this.
The change order and the payment for that are all going to come out of the, the capital reserve fund for Phase Two. And then I will work with the courts to effect a cash transfer from the courthouse donation fund to the capital reserve in order to compensate it for the extra expense.
So for clarification, we don't need to recertify it then as it was presented last week? It can move forward then?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the call.
Sounds like a good plan.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to approve it?
Yeah, let's.
Oh, we can just approve it now?
That's why I asked for clarification from Adrian, because based on what he explained, as it was certified last week when it was presented, it's not being changed in any way. So if you would like to move forward with approval of the.
Okay, so I'll move to approve change order number 14 with the magistrate bench being compensated through the courthouse donation fund.
Second. Any more discussion? Okay, now we can vote.
Commissioner Spitalary?
Aye.
Commissioner Braking?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBorck?
Yes.
Thanks for coming in, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So before you guys leave, we have.
I just have something minor for board discussion. I attended the Chardon Township trustee meeting last night regarding the possible annexation of 10 acres from the, the township to the city. There's a purchasing agreement in place between the United Methodist Church and Redwood Apartments. So this would be high-density housing apartment buildings, essentially, that they're, they're, they would like to put on this acreage. And there's two different ways that annexation could occur. One of the ways would be that the city and the township come to agreement, the township trustees, at least the court and board, there's an election coming up, but they are very adverse to that. So that, that way would not happen. So the other option, as I understand it, would be that the annexation would be, would come before the commissioner. So that is why I attended the meeting. I'll say it was the most well-attended township trustee meeting I've ever been to. And the residents are overwhelmingly opposed to this annexation and to the apartments being there. If you guys have any questions, happy to answer them about where the residents are. But I will say there are some major hurdles from the developer regarding water and sewer to the property. So I, I mean, to the extent it gets to our desk, I think it's going to be quite a while, if, if at all, based on how I understand it. But it's hot, hot topic, something that I think a lot of the residents in Chardon Township clearly care about a lot. So something I think we should care about as well.
Yes, I've been fielded about 10 phone calls on that topic. And, you know, it's a hot topic for sure. And when there is annexation, when both parties come in front of us, 99% of the time, they agree to what the annexation is.
Right.
This one is very controversial, so we'll just, we'll stay tuned.
Yep, stay tuned, see, see where things lead.
Okay. Anything else?
I, I got most of the chair?
Second. I'll move to approve.
Aye. We all sign that?
You all have to sign these three items. And these are.
Mr. DeBorck?